Can everyone hear me okay?
I can hear you now, Fred.
Okay, great. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the peruse, the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of actions during the meeting and by voice told. Extinctions from any vote due to conflict of interest should be stated for the record or the taking of any vote. Or making a comment. The raise and feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to re-recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again. New your microphone and new your microphone will also be utilizing the chat feed to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the webex screen. This being recorded via this platform. So being live stream via YouTube. Email. We have also provided a link to those who can email to a particular tenant.
Thank you, Director. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing. Fluker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Charles.
You're muted, sir. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. First order of business is a special presentation, public art. Uh, this piece is located at 2971 West 25th Street. Tara, you can start this off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm excited to introduce this project, El Museo de Mi Barrio. A mural project at 2971 West 25th Street. This project was approved by the Near West Design Review on Wednesday, November 25th unanimously. Um, I am in support of this project. You all approved a mural on September 4th at a neighboring building of Gina de Jesus by a Latina artist. And this particular project also is by multiple Latina artists and Latina subjects. Um, women as well as the Latino community are very underrepresented in our city with regard to the artists as well as the subjects. So I find this project very refreshing and changing that that narrative as well as just complimenting the mural that just won one building over. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over to the project representative, Mackenzie who is representing Julia de Burgos Cultural Arts Center who collaborated with Cleveland Foundation for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Um, and good morning, everyone. I just want to say thank you for making this virtual space available so that we can continue this work from a distance. Um, like Tara mentioned, my name is Mackenzie Merriman. I'm a project coordinator for Julia de Burgos Cultural Arts Center. And this mural project is part of our public art initiative, El Museo de Mi Barrio. And the goal of the initiative is to bring vibrant new artworks by Latino, Latina, and Latinx artists um, from all over into the Clark Fulton and Brooklyn Center neighborhood. Today, we're going to talk about the location at 2971, which is right next to Zubel Book on West 25th Street. And the scale for there are four arched locations on this building. And each of those arches, the space for the pieces are about 56 inches by 66 inches. And this project is part of the Creative Fusion Program with the Cleveland Foundation. And this is our first installment for this initiative. So if we could go to the next slide, you can get a sense for the building. So this is the front face of the building. Like I mentioned, there's those four orange segments. That's where the artworks will go. And um, I'll also mention the repair to the wall that we're going to do. As you can see on the right side, there's some arches missing. Working on repairing that and repainting the wall too, so we can discuss that. Um, but first, there's a few other views. If you go to the next slide to get a sense for where it is on 25th. This is the John T. Zubel Books Shop. And then the addresses for that red building on the right. You can go forward. Uh, this is just from the other side looking north up 25th. And then from above, we see that it's on 25th between Seymour and Walton. Can move forward. So getting into the artists for this piece, we commissioned these new works from four Latina artists. Uh, the first one is Fenicia Fabre, an artist. She is Dominican and located in Brooklyn. And this is the first time we've worked with her. She responded to an open call that we posted. So it was really exciting to have interest from a really great artist outside of Cleveland in this project. Um, then the next slide, we'll see a Cleveland artist, Alicia Vasquez. Um, she's Afro-Latina Cleveland artist who recently graduated from CIA. And uh, she frequently interacts with the center and has done another mural with us on our campus on Archwood. So uh, we're excited to bring her work out onto the streets. And then the next piece, we'll see another Cleveland-based artist. Natalie Pineda Bermudas is a Colombian painter and theater artist. And um, she's been scaling up her work and we're excited to bring her images out into the world um, through this museum project. And then finally, the fourth artist for this location on the next slide is Gloria Feliciano. So she's a Latina artist from originally from Spanish Harlem, lived in Cleveland for a little bit when we connected with her. And then now she's in San Diego. This piece is the only um, painting. The other three pieces are all digital artworks that we received digitally. But Gloria actually painted this piece for the project. And then if we go to the next slide, we can see what all these works will look like up on the wall. So um, the goal for this project, you know, in so many museums and fine art institutions, uh, Latina artworks and subjects aren't featured or seen, or if it is, it's like a special exhibit and it's not um, a staple of the collection. So we wanted to subvert that idea and bring these artworks out to the world, turn the world into the museum and really put these artists on the stage for people out in Cleveland. Um, so these arches serve as frames for this portrait gallery that's out on 25th in a high-traffic area. And then in the center, um, that center panel is a boarded-up doorway which we'll use to mount the signage. Um, if we go to the next slide, we'll see what the signage will look like. It's a glass panel with wooden bolts. This was recommended to us by West Camp, who's the group that will be installing these works. So uh, like I mentioned, first we will be repairing these walls. Um, building new wooden arches, sanding, priming, and repainting that wooden facade to um, just a new coat of that color that it is at beige. And we're working with a local carpenter on that um, repair. And then for the pieces themselves, they'll be heat-applied vinyl, uh, first with a graffiti coating installed by West Camp. And then West Camp will also be printing the signage. We opted for this type of glass panel because uh, so much of the public art initiative with Julia de Burgos Cultural Arts Center, we want to be able to retain as much of these installations as possible. But these heat-applied vinyls cannot be retained once they're brought down. So it's nice to have this glass panel so that if there is a next lifetime for this location, we have something physical to show for uh, what this first iteration was. The panel will also have a description of the project, uh, lists of the partners involved, and then an acknowledgement to each of the artists so that audiences can tell um, which artist did which piece. And on the next slide, uh, we have been working with Metro West Community Development Organization. They've been leading the Creative Fusion component um, in the neighborhood. So they've been very helpful, getting us connected to business owners and process and things like that. And then Michael Zubel, the building owner, um, we've also been in conversation with. Um, in the Near West Design Review Committee Meeting, there was, there was a question about lifetime for the project or if he plans to uh, reactivate that space. And as far as the timeline that we're looking for of two to five years, he hasn't referenced any plans to reactivate the space. But regardless of what happens there, we think it's a great location for public art and hopefully this can be the beginning of a relationship where we bring our artists to this um, location centered on literacy on 25th. It can be something moving forward. But that is all I have today, and I'd love to answer any questions that you have.
So do you have an agreement with the building owner um, for the duration that it's going to be up there? Or what happens if he gets a tenant in the next year?
So when we received that question at the um, neighborhood review, I reached out to him. So we're having those conversations. Um, but I said, I I mentioned the two to five year and he didn't say anything, but I I think of an agreement would actually be a good idea. So I'm going to write that down.
Or is there another place you could put it? These more pieces if he did reactivate the space because it's a lovely building and be ashamed not to use it.
I think the goal is definitely to use this building and um, just formalize the timeline with the building owner so that we know. Um, because I think so much of these pieces were the direction was given to the artist with this building in mind, really. So it would be a shame for it to live somewhere else. So um, I, I don't know what the conversation is if somebody else buys the building, considering like if we draw up an agreement, but um, I, I will get something formal from him just so that we have that on file too.
Thank you. Commission members.
I move to approve. Stomy, Paul.
Second, August.
Motion second, further discussion.
Uh, this is Lillian. Um, obviously I'm going to abstain just because um, this is a foundation program, Creative Fusion.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Oh, sorry. Uh, Diane, are you here? She said she was coming in later. Okay. Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Char- I'm sorry, Charles, you're muted. Having difficulty hearing you. I'm assuming that's a yes.
Raise your hand. Oh, there you go. The thumb works.
Thank you.
All right. Um, good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit for pedestrian retail overlay district. This is permanent parcel number 11404, zero zero four uh, 768 East 185th Street. This is for off-street parking and loading area and driveway across public sidewalk. Shannon.
Yeah. Good morning, Shannon Leonard, City Planning. Um, next slide, please. So the proposal here is to establish use of unit 774 within this building that is, the address is 768 to 770. There's within that one unit, they would like to establish a wardrobe replay, which is a consignment retail shop. So just a little bit background, last year at this time on December 5th, you guys saw a proposal at the same unit. Uh, it was for a church that had been existing without a CO. Um, you guys denied all of the conditional uses at that location, which included the use as well as the parking lot and the off-street parking. So just a little background there. Um, it's also why the applicant uh, with this new retail shop had to come back before you guys because the previous use was not um, approved. Uh, next slide, please. So as you can see here, this is just showing you what unit we're discussing in this building. Um, it has been advised to the property owner to come before the board in some way uh, to uh, discuss the parking lot and the off-street parking situation here um, for these conditional uses. However, uh, it is really important to us in city planning uh, that you would approve the uses for these uh, specifically for uh, Ms. Teasley, who is the applicant. Um, the applicant is somebody that is a less C in this building. Um, but not necessarily the building owner. The building owner has also owned this property since 2005. It really hasn't showed much interest in wanting to work with the city to bring their lot to code. Uh, next slide, please. So the first conditional use they need is off-street parking or loading. The applicant did initially submit the application without parking. Um, and as you know, every, pretty much every use outside of the central business district needs off-street parking. Um, if she didn't come through the city planning process or didn't have parking, she would need to go through the border zoning appeals process. So the first is off-street parking. The size, shape, or layout of the subject property does not permit placement parking, loading, or driveway in a more suitable location. Or it has been demonstrated by the applicant for the placement of the parking, loading, or driveway in a loud location would jeopardize the continued vacancy of the property. Um, so this is the site plan that was submitted. As you can see, the parking spaces are within the first 40 feet of the pedestrian retail overlay. Um, right past under 774 East 85th Street, you can see the parking bumpers um, to look, which locates 40 feet. Next slide, please. So these are just um, some existing conditions. As you can see, the parking is within the first 40 feet. Along Harland, you can see that there's actually two curb cuts that also go into this pretty large parking lot off east, east 185th Street. Next slide, please. The second thing is obviously the driveway across the public sidewalk. There is also a curb cut on East 185th Street. And some of the conditions that they must meet is that the size, shape, and layout of the subject property does not permit the driveway on in a more suitable location. As we noted, there's two uh, driveways on Harland. And then it has also been demonstrated by the applicant uh, that putting the driveway in the allowed location would jeopardize the continued occupancy of the subject property. Next slide, please. So again, they just need uh, conditional uses for off-street parking or loading areas, driveways extending across a public sidewalk. It's my recommendation that we grant the conditional uses specifically for the tenant at 774. So she may continue her biz or open her business uh, and be able to move forward. But have conditions in which either Mr. Simmons, the building owner, goes through design review for his parking lot. Um, and otherwise for the rest of these tenants, obviously, they would need to come back before for the conditional uses. So it's really up to you all how you wanted to handle this. Um, but city planning would like to bring Mr. Simmons in line with the code for that parking lot um, that he now has consolidated those two lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members.
Also, just to note, there's um, Sharonda Watley from Neighborhood, uh, the city planner for this area, as well as I believe the applicant. Um, Ms. Teasley, um, she's the less C. She's already signed a lease with the owner. Um, and really what's just preventing her from being able to open her business legally is getting through the permitting process. So that's our big concern. It's more of an equity issue at this point. Just because, you know, the building, the tenant, unfortunately, the owner did not ensure that the tenant had everything in place before he leased to her.
Gotcha. Commission members. Is this the council person in support of this, Shannon?
I mean, it's a retail use and I, we definitely support the um, the use. I mean, we want retail uses in our retail overlay districts. Um, and so I do think Councilman Polenzic and um, Laura Balla, the consultant for this area and who has been, you know, we've gone, we've had about seven or eight cases since last December along East 185th because they're trying to bring the businesses compliant with the COs. Um, so we definitely want retail. Um, we would love to have this parking lot brought to code. Um, or, you know, just because really having so many curb cuts along East 185th Street, the whole goal of the pedestrian retail overlay is to minimize the vehicle pedestrian impacts. Um, and to make it more walkable, um, and to protect these old shopping districts. So the councilman, I I'm pretty positive to support this. I mean, it's a retail use. We definitely want to see the retail uses. It's just unfortunate that the building owner has owned this building since 2005 and has not, you know, ensured that his parking lot is to code.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Watley with her hand raised.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Sharonda Watley, Cleveland City Planning. Um, so as Shannon stated, we are definitely in support of the retail use, um, being able to establish itself in this particular location. We have been working um, with Laura Balla. Um, she's the consultant for East 185th Street as well as the business owner um, for the past several weeks, either for the occupancy permit or for their signage. Um, and so again, we are support of, supportive of the use in her establishing um, the consignment um, business here. Uh, but there are some uh, some existing site conditions that do definitely need to be addressed um, via the property owner. Um, and so with that, I will turn it over to Laura Balla if she has any additional comments that she would like to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is an excellent use for this building and a wonderful success for city planning to have removed a church that has been operating illegally and now replace it with a new female entrepreneur uh, opening a retail clothing store. So uh, the councilman is aware of the project and is in support of uh, Ms. Leonard's proposal to approve this particular tenant's CVO while working with the building owner on uh, these other issues.
Thank you. Commission members.
I move approval. It's Lillian. Um, with um, uh, with the stated, um, I don't know if we should make it a condition, but the stated note that um, we require that the building owner come back with the parking lot. But
Not before, not before she gets her occupancy.
Right. I don't want to hold up, I don't want to hold up the occupancy. So I'm approving this um, retail overlay. But I I just want to note, so maybe it's not a condition.
Can we?
Go ahead.
Can we just approve the conditional uses for 774, like unit 774 within the the entire 768 to 770 for the conditional uses that way? Should any more tenants or the owner needs to come back to them through the design review for his parking lot.
Okay. I agree with that. So just for this particular tenant.
So move approval, stated amendment, and we have a second. Further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Just give us your thumbs up. There you go. We got a thumbs up. Uh, motion carries. Good luck. Ordinance number 755-dash uh, 2020, determining the methods of making public improvements, reconstructing a portion of East 18th Street and authorizing the director of capital projects to enter into one or more contracts for the construction and design. Is Rick on the phone?
Yes, I am. Good morning, everybody. This is Rick.
Good morning. You have a few things here.
Yes, I do. I have four items for you today.
All right.
First of all, good morning, everyone. It's Rick Switolski. I manage the engineering and construction division. Uh, East 18th Street from East 14th Street to Lakeside will be repaired and resurfaced approximately 0.94 miles. Improvements include new roadway footprint, one lane in each direction with left-turn lanes at major intersections and bike lanes. Work includes pavement milling base removal, ADA-compliant ramps, and a new 12-inch waterline from Central to Carnegie, Payne to Superior, and at the Rockwell intersection. We look for the approval of the planning commission.
Commission members.
Uh, this is Lillian. You know what I'm going to ask? So I'll ask Rick. What about bike lanes?
They are included.
So they'll be striped?
Yes. They'll be dedicated.
They'll be dedicated. Nice. Thank you.
So you want to make a motion?
I move to approve, August.
Second, Paul.
Motion is second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 8772020 to amend the title in sections 1, 2, 4 of ordinance number 699-dash 2019, passed July 24th, 2019. Go ahead, Rick.
Which one are we on? 877 or 844?
877.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I think you skipped one on the agenda. It should be um, 844 that we're dealing with right now. That's what's up on the screen on the presentation.
Oh, I wonder what happened to that. Sorry about that. I I have the paper at the same time. So I'll just do it from here. Uh, this is 844. Go ahead, Rick. This is Federal Reserve Bank.
Yes, it is. The Federal Reserve Bank of Cleveland is making improvements to security perimeter of the bank on Rockwell Avenue. Improvements include a new guard station, bollards, and an entryway. As you can see from the photo, the lower one is the original guardhouse with the bollards as it currently exists. And up above, you see the new guard shack and the bollards as they proposed to put it in. To go to the next slide. You can see just at the top, under the words Reserve Bank, you can see how the curb line bumps out a little bit. That's the encroachment that they're seeking. And that we agree with.
Yeah, I've seen this before. Um, and it's necessary. Mission members.
To approve, August.
Second, Curry.
Further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we go to 877. Must have thrown away one of the pages. Sorry about that, Rick.
Not an issue. Okay, I'm I'm sorry. Uh, yes, this ordinance, 877, is amending ordinance 699 previously passed. It will remove the city of Euclid as the uh, entity that's doing the improvements and putting, granting consent to ODOT to make these improvements. In essence, ODOT will then do the construction administration of both Phase 1 and Phase 2. And actually, we are now looking at combining these two phases into one contract, which will cause less uh, disruption to the area and will get done quicker with the project. So we're asking the approval to remove, giving consent to City Euclid and now give consent to ODOT to perform the Phase 1.
Commission members.
No approval, slide. Second.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Uh, Bowen.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance number 8822020, giving consent of the city of Cleveland to the director of transportation of the state of Ohio to resurface portions of Lake Avenue.
Thank you. The limits of this project are Lake Avenue from West 117th to Detroit Avenue. The city has arranged for the preparation of construction plans and specification, including engineering reports. ODOT will arrange the project sale, award to lowest bidder, and provide construction supervision and administration. The project was selected by NOAACA as a part of the pavement preservation program. Improvements include asphalt milling, pavement Improvements include asphalt milling, pavement base repair, asphalt resurfacing, installation of ADA compliant ramps. Landscape pedestrian refuge islands will be installed from Clifton to Viking Court at West 85th, at West 78th. Decorative crosswalks will be installed at Clifton, West 85th, and West 78th, similar to Detroit Avenue and Clifton Boulevard. Bike lanes will be installed from Clifton to Detroit. We're looking for your approval on it to move forward with this project.
Thank you very much. My car thanks you, too.
It is a nasty street with the surface there.
It is a nasty street, and I live on it. Commission members?
I just have a question. Since the bike lanes are going from Clifton to Detroit, to Detroit section, was the decision about Clifton to 117th to do Cheryl's or wasn't room? What was the thought thinking to sort of only give a half or a small fraction of it?
That's going to be, I believe, Cheryl's from that. The road's too narrow at that point to put dedicated bike lanes. There's some desire, some city looking, maybe going onto Edgewater Road. Also, the Metro Parks is looking to do a separate project along Lake that would put a bike path in there by extending the sidewalk on the north side of the road. So there's the possibilities of being examined of how to provide bicycle service along that area.
Well, Lillian, I'm real familiar with it. And if they took the on-street parking away from the apartments across the street on the south side of the street, they would probably lose a lot of their tenants because not all of them have enough parking for the buildings.
So Miss Currie, it's been looked at right now as in various options of how to provide that service.
Okay. I mean, I actually think in some ways, working with the Metro Parks and the connection to either Edgewater makes actually sense, too, for where that routing is. So that's good to hear.
A couple of options up in the air being looked at.
Can I get an approval?
Yeah, move to, motion to approve, Paul.
Second, Flucker.
Motion is second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. I'll have a nice day, nice weekend.
You, too. Ordinance number 883-2020, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the Tamira Rice Foundation to construct, install, use, and maintain certain streetscapes and landscapes improvements that encroach on the city right of way. That's the end?
This is a deal with the Mayor's Office of Capital Projects in the Division of Real Estate of the presenting this ordinance.
Go ahead.
Tamira Rice Foundation is requesting to put in some improvements for a dedicated memorial for Tamira Rice in the Kudel Commons area. You may recall, this is the vicinity where in 2014, Tamira Rice was murdered by law enforcement. The area of where the improvements will be made is in unimproved right of way. So the instrument type here would be an encroachment permit. See on the screen right now. The yellow is where their proposed improvements will be. And the red maroonish is the dedicated right of way, roughly. This isn't a scale. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is an overview of the facility, or the vicinity, rather. Different amenities. The elementary school, another memorial, and the Kudel Clock Tower are nearby. The improvements are proposed on the existing Butterfly Garden, kind of in the middle of the conglomerate of facilities here. And this visual is just for you to have a sense of where it is. If we can go to the next one, please. So the improvement has been reviewed and approved by the Landmarks Commission already, earlier in the year. In addition to being a memorial, it will become more accessible with improved plantings and potentially touching up the bollards that surround it. Next slide, please. This is kind of a rendition of what it will look like eventually. And Jamie Schwartzberg is the architect for this, and she is also present at this meeting today if anybody has any questions regarding the design or the design process or the intent. And that's all I have for now.
Commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
We have a motion and second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 904-2020, authorizing Commissioner of Purchase and Supply to purchase properties for the improvements of the Ambler-Holton Playground.
Yes, this is Atta presenting this one as well. As you can see, the blue is the listed park, and the yellow parcel is a County Land Bank parcel that is vacant. This playground is scheduled for a rehabilitation project in early 2021. And this is a good time to add this parcel as part of the larger improvements to increase the acreage of the park and the overall green space that we have there. And this is at the northeast corner of Ambler Street and Holton Avenue.
Commission members?
Move approval, Downing.
Second, Curry.
Motion is second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Atta, you did a good job.
Thank you very much and have a good weekend.
You, too. Okay, ordinance number 938-2020, authorizing the Director of Ported Controls to enter. Whoa, hold on, hold on. Nope, we're off again. This is ordinance number 888-2020, authorizing the Commissioner of Purchase and Supplies to purchase property for the construction of the new Division of Fire Station 26. Suzanne.
Good morning. Suzanne, Division General Mayor's Office of Capital Projects, Division of Real Estate. This ordinance would authorize the purchase of the three parcels that you see on your screen from Burton Bell Car for the development of a new fire station, Fire Station 26. This is located at the southeast corner of East 90th and Kinsman Avenue. And if you can advance to the next slide, I can show you an overview. So you can see that the parcels sort of fall right in the middle of the development area, and that's why we need to acquire them. They total just under a third of an acre. And the councilman is in support of the project. And that's basically it.
And this is the one we just reviewed for design review. Mission members?
Move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
Motion is second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 938-2020, authorizing the Director of Ported Controls to enter into agreement with the Greater Cleveland Sports Commission. And this is to remove the buildings on Dock 30 and 32. This is for the NFL Draft on North Coast Harbor. Anyone else here to speak to this, or who's here to speak to this?
John Hughes here with the Department of Port Control.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Good morning. As part of the city's contribution to host the 2021 NFL Draft, Port Control is requesting legislative authority to enter into a contract with the Cleveland Sports Commission to demolish the Dock 30 and 32 warehouses and to prep the vacated land for event day activities. This project is necessary to ensure the NFL and its partners are able to produce a high-quality environment in line with previous draft locations in Philadelphia, Chicago, and Nashville. By way of background, the warehouses are approximately 118,000 square feet. Currently sitting inside the buildings are basically supplies, equipment, and attic stock for North Coast Harbor that will be removed and located to different locations throughout the city. The properties have very little historical relevance. And lastly, I wanted to highlight that Councilman McCormick has been briefed on the project and is supportive. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Director Donald to discuss some of the specifics of the scope.
Go ahead.
I certainly had connection issues, John, so I think you were turning it over to me. Okay.
Track Dr. Donald.
No problem. Thank you. Good morning, Commission. I haven't been before you guys in quite some time. So good to see some familiar faces. Good morning. And 32, both of these, we are currently working to pin down the specifications regarding what will happen, but the site will be cleared in the sense that the dock will be demolished. Going down to sub-levels, we will also, some other considerations that we are working on for the specifications are managing the water issue. There are some catch basins there because of the elevation of the land. There are a couple of considerations that we will factor into the demolition. But in essence, the demolition is just a run-of-the-mill demolition of two warehouses on the site.
Commission members?
Move approval, Downing.
Second slide.
Motion is second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Administrative approval. Administrative approvals, take a look, and I'll take a motion when you're ready.
This is Mike. If anyone listening has never been to the International Women's Air and Space Museum and the Burke Terminal, it's a pretty cool space. I encourage people to check it out.
Thank you.
Yes. I move approval, Mr. Chairman, Downing.
Second, Paul.
We have a motion and two seconds, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Near West Design Review, who's here to speak to this one?
Michael Horton, Horton Harper Architects.
Anyone else with you, Michael, besides you?
Just me.
Okay. Need to swear you, and do you sound me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. If there was more than one person, I'd ask you to state your name next to it, but you know who you are, Michael. And you're from the next two, so go ahead.
Sure.
This is Building 1.
Yes, and I'll speak on Building 1 and Building 2 at the same time. We can always revisit the second case if there are additional questions. You can see the two parcels here along Willie or Wiley, depending on who you talk to in the neighborhood. But the site, you know, sits sort of at the bottom of the hill, right at the intersection of the street and the railroad tracks there on the Duck Island. This is, I should mention, this is the second time that we have presented this to the planning commission, and it did receive.
This could be an approval from before.
Correct. So you can see the two sites there across the street from one another. Next slide, please. And starting, we'll go clockwise into the upper left. This is an aerial view to the west. You can see the site is kind of toward the middle. Those two, you know, open areas that have less vegetation than the rest. So you're kind of at this threshold of the industrial flats to the east and then a more vegetated hillside to the west. You can see over to the north, you have the residential neighborhood of Duck Island. And then to the left, you can even see St. Wendell's Church and the school. Moving clockwise, these are just views of the site. Top right is a view of the hillside. You can see the railroad tracks. Going down to the next view is the same direction. And you're just looking a little bit further. Actually, you're flipped, looking at the other side of the railroad. The next, you can see the hillside. At the next, the bottom right slide, that is the St. Wendell's School. You can see kind of the window pattern that I think that starts to kind of, you know, help influence the design. The center view is a view down, down Wiley toward the site. And then this final on the bottom left is a view looking west or northwest at kind of the more industrial context on the other side of the railroad tracks. Next slide, please. So here's a little bit more zoomed in site plan of what we're looking at. We've got the 12-unit apartment building, which is building number 2. To our left and to the north and to the right, we've got an 18-unit apartment building. We're also just kind of conceptually showing where a single-family house could be, you know, on the opposite side of the drive curb cut for apartment building 1. Next slide, please. So here is a little bit more of a detailed site plan showing kind of a combination of where we see landscaping areas in yellow. And then we do have a landscaping plan that we'll get to. In the gray is where we have our hardscape for parking. In the light blue is our hardscape for pedestrian access and then landscaping context in green or sort of the existing vegetation. We did present this to Near West Design Review back on the 25th, and it did receive approval. One comment they've made is they wanted us to widen the sidewalk to building number, on building number 2, which is on the left there, to an eight-foot wide width to help, to help connect what hopefully will be a multi-use trail that connects Columbus Road to Train Avenue. And so that was one of the comments from the design review board, and that is incorporated here. So that's probably the biggest difference that you see here from when you reviewed this for schematic approval last month. And so that's kind of right in front of the 12 units on the left side of Wiley there. You can see that that sidewalk is a little bit wider. So that's probably the most significant change since we last met. Next slide. Here is the view of building number one. See, we have eighteen units. It's sort of clustered in three masses, each with two units each floor per mass, so we've got six units, and it kind of steps down the hillside. We've got a large two-story entry portal dividing sort of the primary building mass that allows access, access to parking, access to the entries, and then for all of the street-facing units, we have front entries and divine stoops and canopies. Next slide. Here's another view. Again, we're kind of taking some of the industrial character of some of these warehouses and the school with the more regimented grid of windows, and combining that and softening it with the cement-board lap-siding articulation that is very common in a lot of the houses in the neighborhood of Tremah, Ohio City, and Duck Island, and so it's a combination of those two ideas, and then kind of softening it with a white to help bring a little bit of a, you know, kind of a more sensitive, delicate presence to this kind of industrial neighborhood. Next slide, please. Again, this is a view at night of that, the portal through the building. We think that that could be some sort of reflective metal panel that connects the front into the back, that could be lit in the evening, kind of a beacon for the building, and then in the daytime, it will still have some reflective qualities when it's hitting the east and west sun in the morning and at dusk. Next slide. Another view. This view is to the north. You're inside building one, looking across the street to building two, and then you can see the entries, the entry from the back with the canopy, kind of a two-story glazing frame to help define each individual entry. Next slide. This is the view of building number two. Again, the same idea, the same design, direction, the simple grid of windows to help articulate each floor and articulate sort of the character of the building. So we're looking north and similar entry articulation as well. Next slide. Another view of building number two, which is on the north side of the street. Next slide. And this is our material palette. We've got, as mentioned before, we're gonna have fiber-cement board lap siding that will be white. We've got an eight-inch exposure, which is a little bit larger than typically what you see in the neighborhood, which is appropriate because we're increasing the scale of the building at space in the foundation, as well as on the steps and the porch stoops. We've got a smooth poured-in-place concrete. And the windows will be black, and then at that two-story portal entry, we'll have some type of reflective aluminum metal panel. Next slide. And then here's a very simple landscaping plan, which I think is probably better articulated in the renderings. I think what's good to know here is we also have lighting located here, and so each, each individual unit, each of their sides will be uplit, which is, you can see by the UL designation, and then in addition to that, we'll also have.
You just muted yourself.
In addition to that, we'll also have down lighting and recessed lighting in those canopies at each entry, and so each one will be clearly illuminated. And then the building itself will, you know, has appropriate lighting. Next slide. These are just pretty basic floor plans. I mean, the floor plans for each unit are the same. The following slides after this are, you know, floor plan and exterior elevations, and so we can discuss those if needed, but we're open to any, open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michael. Mission members, questions?
This is Lillian. I really like the project a lot, and so I move approval.
Second, Fluker.
Okay, so this is for Cooper Flats, building number one. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we go on to Cooper Flats, building number two.
Sure.
Do you want to do them separately? Do you want me presenting them? Do you want us to?
Mr. Chairman, we do have Matt Moss with his hand raised.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to briefly add that throughout this whole process, the applicant's been really open to review and comment from staff in the, in the local Design Review Committee. The only suggestion I might add, if the applicant's amenable to it, is suggesting a street screen for the parking lot on this building, too, the north building, just to make sure that parking is screened, but if the, if the applicant's amenable, I would recommend putting that in the motion to approve.
Michael, can you, can you work with Matt on that?
Yeah, we're open to working with the city on appropriately screening the parking, whether that be through landscaping or some, something physical, but we're open to that idea. Yes, of course.
Great, thanks.
So I move approval with not coming back here, but coming back to staff with landscaping.
Or screening.
Oh, yeah, or screening.
Second.
We have a motion?
Second, Fluker.
We have a second. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Nice project. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. One last question, just to clarify, so then we would come back to the Planning Commission to, to show the screening?
No.
No.
Just work with staff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you. Far West Design Review, this is for the EZ Auto Group poll sign. Who's going to be here to speak to this? Anyone speaking, I need to swear you in?
Yes, Adele Windsor for B-Next Design.
Anyone else?
Nope, just me.
Do you sound me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead.
So this job was actually already presented at the local Design Review Committee, and they approved the building sign as seen on page one. The pole sign was not approved. They, we were told that it needs to be removed, and the customer is open to that, and the committee actually did have some suggestions as they would be open to a new monument sign in place of the pole sign, either the north or south entrance, and if you go to page two, you can see the pole sign right there. So that obviously needs to be removed and replaced with a new ground sign. They did tell us that there were landscaping that was needed to be done to gain approval for the monument sign. The customer is still unsure as of right now as to what side they want to put the new ground sign on, either the north and/or the south. So Adam Davenport actually told us that we needed to come back to Planning Commission to get the denial of the pole sign to move forward with the new proposal of the monument sign.
So you're looking for a denial?
I mean, not necessarily, but that's what we're told.
It's, I don't know if that was the first, but it's gotta be close to the first, if not. Commission members, what do you think of the pole sign?
First in twenty years.
I'm confused. And that doesn't take a lie.
I can, I can explain perhaps, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. The local Design Review Committee makes recommendations to the Planning Commission. They do not have the authority to disapprove administratively, so it is up to you. I mean, personally, if I was on the commission, I'd be like, I don't care, the pole sign looks fine to me, but, you know, it's up to you to be the ones to make that decision whether or not it stays, because the Design Review Committee simply does not have that authority.
So what does the owner really want to do?
Well, they would like the pole sign to stay.
So, so does this sign meet zoning? I guess that's why I'm confused. I'm not asking, I'm not sure what you're asking us to approve or disapprove based upon what's permitted.
Well, the customer actually hired a different contractor who then informed them that the permits were already pulled for these signs, so these signs are already installed right now, and the permits were actually not pulled, and then the customer contacted us to pull the permits to, you know, make these signs legal.
So is this pole sign up?
These signs are installed right now, yes.
Including the pole sign?
Correct.
Oh, well.
Mr. Chair, to, 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 to the applicant, no one's asked her by another question. Are these signs permitted for zoning?
Michael, could you answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the sign, the, the examiners over in zoning always defer to City Planning Commission in a Design Review District. They do not want to take the time to see if they're to code or not, because you guys have the authority to approve any signage up to a certain extent, I mean, certain cases where you're not, but any signage in a Design Review District, you can approve beyond the limit, or you can make it more restrictive than the code. It's entirely up to you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Shannon Leonard with her hand raised. She's kind of the office's sign expert.
Go ahead, Shannon.
So this sign is in, I believe, is, what, is, what's, is it general retail or local retail? Do you know, Michael?
No, I'm sorry. I do not know the zoning for this particular area.
Okay, so if it's in local retail, then the sign is too tall. If it's in general retail, then it meets the codes.
So I, Shannon, if, if we... What's that?
They had permits to install it, right?
No.
What they did was install it before they got the actual permits, and whoever the sign company was prior to B-Next went ahead and installed the sign without the proper permits, and that's why they're here, is my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make this simple, because I don't think everybody has all their facts together here, as it relates to whether it's permitted or not. For zoning, then obviously there's no permit to construct it. I'd suggest we table this until we understand all the facts, because I'm not really clear. I would move it.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Can I get a second?
Second, Downing.
Okay, we have a motion second under further discussion. Shannon, can you take a look at this and see, one, if it meets zoning, or if it doesn't? If it doesn't meet zoning by how much? And then, we don't see the one sign. We need to kind of see this in context with the whole property, so we can make a determination. I don't necessarily like to tear things out just to tear things out.
And can you?
And if it's appropriate, then maybe it's appropriate.
And can you take some pictures, since those are renderings? I'd love to see what that changes, like.
I think there's some pictures.
Well, the pictures are actually, even though they look like pictures, so I'd actually see it.
Is that Shannon Zick? Can you do that?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll do that, and I'll reach out to Adam, who's the neighborhood planner for the area, to try to understand what's really going on here.
Okay. Super. So we have a motion second to table. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Okay, see, hopefully in the next two weeks. That would be great.
Thank you.
But let's just make sure when, whenever it's complete. Okay. The next is a proposed demolition of a two-and-a-half-story mixed-use building. And we was doing a number of these. So, Commission members, when we look at this, let's take a look, see if it's historically significant, if it adds to the context of the street, if it needs to come out because of life safety. Let's take all those things into consideration, as the code says, under three, four, one, dash, point, zero, eight.
Hi, good morning, Commission members. Hi, this is on four, six, six, West One Thirty. So this property is actually not one that I would normally bring to you guys, because it's not in terrible shape. The local CDC, I brought this to our attention, that there's a lot of squatters, drug activity that's going on in the property, and we also have an absentee owner out of state that has been promising for over a year to put some money into the building, but have failed to do so. So here we are. So we're just gonna scroll slowly through the pictures. Like I said, it's not in the worst shape. Normally, I would bring this to you guys. We can just slowly scroll through the pictures. And there's signs of squatting there.
I move approval.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
This property, I, yeah, I gotta be honest, I feel like this is a good opportunity to publicly check them if they're responding to Cleveland.
I couldn't hear you. Say that again, please?
Wondering who the property owner is, that's out of state. There's so many buildings like this around town with these absentee owners, and I'm, I'll admit that I'm looking for opportunities to shame them publicly.
It is called a Paz Holdings LLC.
Got it.
That's convenient.
They're out of New York, so.
So these, they probably bought it as a grouping of buildings.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I mean, like I said, it is a pretty decent building, though.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
No.
Motion carries, and we have one vote. Okay, this is a proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building, seeking final approval. This is... Uh-oh, what happened? This is at one, two, nine, one, zero, Union Avenue.
All right, yes, so this is one, two, nine, one, zero, Union Avenue. So this one is in pretty bad shape. Our asbestos surveyor reported that the floor is very weak, the stairwells are missing to the basement. So this one, you know, we'll just scroll through the picture. Like I said, this one's in pretty bad shape.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yep.
Motion carries. Proposed demolition of a one-story institutional building, seeking final approval. This is at one, thirty, four, zero, seven, Miles.
Yes, so this is a, I believe, is a church and a two-story residential that's all on one lot. I mean, I don't think the church is in that bad shape. It's been condemned. Like I said, the house, you know, it's one of those typical ones that we usually have, but this one is not in that bad of shape, but you could just look at the pictures and, you know, judge for yourselves.
I move to approve demolition, Flucker.
Second, Downing.
Motion and second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Proposed demolition of a two-story mixed use building seeking final approval. This is at one, three, seven, zero, eight, Harvard.
Hi, yes, again, one, three, uh, seven, zero, eight, Harvard. Um, so this one's a mixed use building, I believe. Um, it's, it's been, uh, if you could look at the pictures, um, again, the exterior's not in terrible shape. Um, uh, interior is not in, you know, it's not, it doesn't have any like foundation issues, but it's just, you know, one of those safety issues. Um, and it's near a playground.
I mean, it's a safety issue just from the mold itself.
Second, Flucker.
Motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Diane, sorry. Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Proposed demolition of a one-story institutional building. This is located at one, four, three, one, five, Harvard.
All right, so one, four, three, one, five. Um, I mean, the pictures tell the whole story. It's in pretty bad shape. Um, there's holes in the roof. Um, if you could just slowly go through the pictures, uh, the property is absolutely trash and the CDC, uh, is the one that really contacted me to try to push this one. Uh, you can see the garage has already collapsed. And like I said, we'll just show you the pictures.
I'm approval.
Second.
We have a motion second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Carries. Uh, proposed demolition of a one-story residential commercial structure is attached to a garage seeking final approval. This is, uh, located at three, nine, three, zero, East One Thirty First Street. Who's here to speak to this one? Anyone here for this one?
Well, it looks like we have Don Laster as the contractor. Do we have him?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Don, I'm going to have to swear you in. Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
Yes, uh, this is a one-story office, uh, building in horrible conditions, bad roof leaking, it's caved in, it's, uh, right off one hundred and thirty first, uh, near, uh, Dove Avenue. It, uh, I, I showed pictures. I'm looking for final approval to, uh, demolish it, uh, taking out all the concrete and the signs. Uh, this building been there, uh, empty probably for fifteen years and, um, the owner has bought the property and want to take it down with a future plan to build. Um, and, uh, I'm looking for final approval.
Thank you.
Second, second, Paul.
We have a motion second, further discussion. Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Good luck to you. Buckeye Plaza freestanding signage seeking final approval. This is at one, one, three, zero, one, and one, one, five, zero, one, Buckeye Road. Who's all here to speak to this one?
I am Adam Luckin. I'm the president, CEO of IBIS Development and the owner of the shopping center.
I'm Councilman Blaine Griffin. I'm going to speak on behalf, I'm going to speak on this as well.
And Mark Field, the city planning.
Okay.
Anthony Whitfield, Chair of the Southeast Region Design Review.
All right, so the councilmen and Mark, I don't need to be sworn in, but everyone else does. You sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury. Please say I do in your name.
I do, Anthony Whitfield.
And Mr. Chairman, Collier, I'll be speaking.
Okay.
I do, Adam Luckin.
So who's going to start this off? Mark, are you going to do that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this, uh, the sign that's being, uh, presented today, um, has been through a few meetings. We started actually with our first meeting in May. Um, and, uh, it was initially a sign that was thirty-one feet high, I think, and had, um, several tenant panels on it. Um, it, uh, we, we reviewed and requested that they meet with the community. There were some concerns, one about just the size and the fact that it, you know, that there were several code violations, um, or several elements that did not meet the code, um, at the time. And so, uh, they eventually presented at one of the councilmen's meetings. They did come back with some changes to their plans that, um, reduced the height of the sign to twenty-five feet, which is within code, uh, in that area. And also, um, at, uh, reduced the number of tenant panels. That part still, um, did not meet code, neither does the, um, mess, the electronic board. Um, and the committee, um, had a lot of issues and concerns with that. They were concerned about the fact that it didn't seem to fit in with the scale, um, that, uh, just, the, just the overall directional design really wasn't kind of where they were looking to go, um, numbers, uh, tenant panels. I think it's still an issue because there were two and I think only one is allowed by code, which was, which is the, um, the, uh, anchor to, um, and so what they did was they recommended that maybe we can, in an informal meeting, and try to give some guidance as to what it is that we were looking for. And we did that, uh, with the, um, with the, uh, sign contractor, um, and talked about, you know, some of the things that we were looking for and gave, tried to give some inspiration in terms of like what the theme of the neighborhood is that Buckeye has had, kind of had this consistent theme of like the art and soul of Buckeye. So we tried to, tried to give them some sort of inspiration as to some of the things that were happening along Buckeye Road. Um, and part of the reason that we have so much concern about this is because of the fact that it's in an area where a lot of city investment is taking place right now. We have the mayor's transformation initiative, um, which is going on in that area along with, uh, Buckeye's, um, TLCI plan, uh, skating roadway improvements, trying to improve pedestrian feel of the area and, um, uh, and improve the aesthetics. Uh, we also, um, are, um, we were, um, we just, we, we met with them and tried to just give them some guidance as to kind of where we're headed and what we were looking for. And so we finished that meeting and, um, the, the applicant came back with a different design, which is the one that you will see today. Um, and we really do want to work with the applicant to try to come with something that is, um, acceptable, but something that is, something that meets his desires, but also is, is something that would be acceptable to the community. Um, he has actually put in quite a bit of money into the plaza. And so we very appreciative of that he's, um, done. We painted the parking lot, put in LED lighting, um, and, uh, painted the building, added logos to the building. So they're really nice improvements and we do appreciate that. But the, the look of the sign, we also feel is, is, is really important to, um, Buckeye Road. So, um, with that, I will go over to the, uh, the applicant to do the presentation.
Go ahead, Adam. Okay. Um, do you want me to speak first or?
Please, go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, this is, um, Steve Gerson from, uh, V I S Signs. Uh, uh, my, my partner, Bobby's unavailable this morning, so, uh, I was going to, you know, speak, you know, for us. But I just wanted to explain a few things related, um, you know, to the sign. Uh, first of all, just so the members of the planning commission are aware of this, the design that we'd like to go ahead with is, um, is option B. And just so you know, this is the fifteenth revision that we have made over the last, you know, six-month, you know, period of time. Since we had the meeting the other day, based upon the feedback from the community and also the feedback from, uh, Councilman Griffin, the owner has agreed to add, you know, a landscape base to the, uh, you know, bottom of the sign with landscaping. We've also agreed to, you know, change the Buckeye logo to be at the, uh, center of the sign. And of course, there was a little confusion related to the construction of the sign, but the side view really just shows the elements of the sign, but the, the sign on the side view will be completely finished with a decorative pole cover and will be, um, completely, you know, finished. The sign is as proposed, and unfortunately though, we were not allowed to make those design changes to present to you, you know, this morning, you know, be, because, um, you know, they said we could not make any, you know, changes to what we presented to you this morning to show the landscaping, you know, et cetera. The, the sign as designed has a number of changes and the sign's completely, uh, in compliance with the code. The sign will be installed at approximately at twenty-three feet from grade level to the top, which is two feet lower than the twenty-five foot max. And the square footage of the sign is, of a hundred and twenty-five square feet is, um, in compliance with the ordinance. And, um, the, the tenant panels we've changed and now we're only requesting, you know, one tenant panel, which is getting compliance, you know, with the ordinance. And of course, it would have an electronic LED changeable copy board, which would be used primarily for community service and public service messages, but we realized that, uh, that would probably have to go to the, um, you know, zoning hearing board for, uh, you know, final approval. But, uh, I'll let Adam, the, um, you know, owner of the shopping center, explain everything from, uh, his view for me.
Sure. Um, first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, being on this call. Um, my, my goal when I bought this, uh, eleven and a half months ago was to transform the center. Nobody has spent, uh, any money in this area in the last twenty-five years, according to, uh, Councilman Griffin. Um, and I, I really want to hopefully, uh, change the area into something special. Um, I don't care, I'm going to be so transparent with you folks, but I really don't care about this sign. It doesn't matter to me. It really doesn't. In fact, we don't even need it. We already have a sign that's there. But part of my rationale on doing this is to change the name of the center instead of Buckeye Plaza to the Shops at Buckeye. Um, it just needs a new identity. Secondly, um, I want to advertise Simons. It's unimportant the name of the shopping center. When people go to a shopping center, they remember the tenants. They really don't care what the name of the center is. Um, I own, just to be transparent, I own, uh, a fair amount of retail properties, about seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of, of real estate right now. Uh, I'm the sole owner of all these things. Um, this to me is a passion. Uh, it, 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 it doesn't equate to anything in, in my entire portfolio. Um, but I want to try to give back to this community. If the community does not want a sign, I'm okay with that. It doesn't matter. But if they want really good tenants, they need to provide something to the tenants because the tenants are the ones that require it, not me and really not the community. I want to do something very simple. It is to code, as Steve said. And if you wanted to change the Buckeye here or there or on the side, or you wanted to make it twenty-three feet instead of twenty-five feet, or you wanted this decorative stuff on the side, no big deal. I'm fine with it. I'm doing this out of my own pocket. I'm not asking for any money from anybody. Um, and again, I, I'm just looking at the greater good for the entire community. That's pretty much all I needed to say. I, it got into a little bit of, uh, of, uh, I'm trying to think of a better word than pissing match, so I apologize. Uh, I can't think of a better word, but over style and substance and this and that. And honestly, again, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. I wanted something simple that when, when people saw it, and as you could see on the lower panel, it's an LED. So the whole point of the LED is for the community to speak to the community. We'll put messages on there like happy holidays, don't drink and drive, wear your seatbelts, it's thirty-two degrees and snowy and things like that. It, that's the kind of stuff that we want to put on these messages. It, there, there is nothing more than that. And what's great about this sign is it could be controlled remotely. So if something's gone down, if there's an amber alert and you called me up or you called one of my folks up and you said, hey, Adam, um, you know, there's an amber alert, look out for this car, we can put it up there instantaneously. And it's a way to get good messages out to the community. Again, I just wanted to let you guys know what my true, um, you know, I wear my heart on my sleeve. I just want to tell you a little bit about who I am, what I hope to accomplish, and, and I hope that we all succeed together because this community really needs it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? We do have, uh, Councilman Slade with his hand raised.
Councilman?
Thanks, uh, trying to, trying to talk with you guys different ways, so I'm on my phone. Um, I guess I, I'm not entirely clear on what the local committee is suggesting there be in, in lieu of this. If, if there's, um, if, if, is it, is it that the issue that there's a sign is the issue that there's the height? Um, because I, I think part of what I see is, um, you know, in, in decades ago, we built plazas like this and maybe this isn't the design of retail we go for currently. And, and because of things, things are so far set back from the road, we're encouraging liner buildings to be closer to the street. Um, but, you know, me, someone not from the neighborhood, driving by and not being able to easily cock my head back and see what's in the plaza, um, you know, the, the signage offers an ability to, you know, to, to, as, as the applicant said, to, for, for the retailers to make their presence known. So I guess I, it's a point of clarification. What specifically is the issue? What's being offered as an alternative? And is currently the only tenant, uh, signage that's being proposed? Is it limited to Simon's supermarket?
Well, here, and, and this is what I heard, and Adam, you can correct me if I'm wrong. This is a redesigned sign. And this is from the comments that the neighborhood and design review have said, it's been incorporated in this. The other one that they haven't changed is, that they're willing to change is adding landscape to the base of the sign. So that can, that can be looked at by staff. I guess what I'd like to find out, um, Councilman, did you want to speak? Because I'd like to know what you think.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some, uh, I have another presentation that I believe Mr. Whitfield wants to present, uh, with respect to this sign. I didn't know when you wanted to see that.
Okay, Anthony, go ahead. Let's, let's look at it.
This is Director Collier. If you could have, uh, Mr. Whitfield speak, uh, and then have the councilman speak, and then we'll provide that closing commentary. And thank you for the, uh, the, the dialogue, Adam. Really appreciate your posture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Good morning.
Thank you, Director. Good morning, commissioners. Adam, good morning to you. And we thank you so much for your investment. We understand the importance of signage. We've had several conversations, and just to be clear, I think we've addressed issues of size and probably scale. The electronic messaging center is not an issue with the committee. Thought that was good. We've seen that in other parts of the city. What came out of our community discussion back in November were things around giving this signage the look of the future, as we began to look at the Buckeye neighborhood and how things will change. And that's how we were trying to convey some of those messages. We had members who have taken time out of their busy day and presented some sketches. You see a few of them here. There was a second Charette. We sent some photographs just to be inspirational, not to dictate design. And we've said that in our meeting. That's not our job. That's for you and your sign team. And to give this a little more character, and that's what we thought. Then the issue of the sign being sitting right in the parking lot, you're taking out a parking space, which is not a huge issue. But our question is, how well would a pedestrian or a driver of a vehicle, be able to see that sign? Those were the issues that really, really led to a lot of discussion. So we're not arguing the sign. Location, maybe a little bit. Wow factor, maybe a little bit more. But the issue of size, I think we've addressed. We've addressed the issue of the messaging board, not an issue from our point of view. But I share on the screen here, and these were not to be designs for you to follow, just to be inspirational. And they were just a one-hour of hand sketches through one of our architects. We've sent several photographs just to also do the same thing, to create inspiration for something that could be better than what we have today. And that is purely what this was about.
Okay. So now is the councilman going to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to this committee. I first have to say that I've become a sign expert over the last couple of weeks, more than I would ever want to know. I've spent an enormous amount of time on this sign with some very choice words, more so than what Adam used today, okay? But what I want to share with you is that everybody really worked hard. And really, this is how a process is supposed to work. Nobody is getting everything that they want. I will tell you that, you know, one of the reasons why this committee has worked very hard to try to accommodate Ibis Corporation and Mr. Lupkin is because of my urgency to really tell them to try to make this work the best way that we can, because I respect processes, and I respect this committee as well as the Southeast Design Review Committee, because I know how critical they are towards making sure that our city is aesthetically pleasing. I'm really looking forward to the committee's input and what they believe. I'm glad that my colleague Charlie Sly chimed in, because I really know that he's the resident developer mindset on council. I deal mostly with safety and all of that kind of stuff. But what I will tell you is that I think the sign has met a lot of the needs that the community has asked for. I do believe that, you know, I don't want to underscore the committee's or undermine the committee's work, because the committee has done a tremendous amount of work to really try to bring the sign the scope and scale, which I think Mr. Lupkin and their team have really tried to accommodate. I think there may still be room for a couple more tweaks if they can just hang in there with us. But I want to underscore this. Everybody's being super cautious and extra cautious on Buckeye, because Buckeye is coming back. And we just spent one point two million dollars to wipe box and acquire the properties on Buckeye so that we could eliminate the blight. We've torn down properties where they are in disarray, you know, to make sure that we make room for new development. We're working on housing and repairing homes and building new homes in the area. And this owner has basically came in and done something that I've never seen. The former owner was out of Toronto, which was late. And this owner has come in and spent his own money, has repaved the entire parking lot, has painted the entire plaza, added LED lighting, put drainage in, has recruited a lot of other tenants, and has really worked hard to accommodate. Now, I often encouraged him not to die on his heel about this sign, because I know that I don't want anybody to get discouraged with the process. But one of the things we have to do in Cleveland is we have to try to work with folks like this that are bringing new money to our town, and quite frankly, are really considering investing in other retail markets, hit Church Square and other things that we really need new ownership and fresh leadership and fresh eyes on. So I can live with the sign. I know that there are some things that a lot of us would like to see to give it that wow factor that Mr. Whitfield is talking about. But I really encourage the input from this committee on what kind of suggestions you would make to make this a better sign and get a better outcome. But I can live with the sign as it is now. But I really want to hear from Director Collier, who has been great. Him and Marka and his team have really worked hard to really try to accommodate this. We've been on the phone late at night, early in the morning, really trying to figure out how we can really make this work. So I guess I'm saying all of this to tell you a lot of work and time have been put into this, and we really want to make this work. I want to respect the will of the Southeast Design Review. But I do believe we have to be reasonable, especially when somebody's making a tremendous amount of investment in our community to really try to accommodate the sign. Plus, at the end of the day, this money that he has to spend, and he has agreed to increase the amount of money he's going to spend on this by when I asked him to put a landscape base, as well as make some adjustments on the panels, as well as the Buckeye branding and everything else. We're about to get a brand-new street there next year. We got a TLCI grant. This area, everybody's being super cautious, because this is going to be the next exciting strip in Cleveland. So I really look forward to your input, and thank you so much to everybody for really trying to come to a compromise to get this done.
Thank you, Councilman. Director?
Yes, thank you. I do want to start off by kind of iterating a point that was made. We love what Mr. Lupkin is doing. I think that everyone is passionate about the investments that's taking place, and we want to make sure that every aspect of activity is done the right way. And I think that's where we're going to come from. A couple of key points that I want to make that gets into some specificity to respond to the councilman and Mr. Lupkin. One, we talked a little bit about the sign options that were presented. And the applicant is not comfortable with those particular options. Because he has that right.
I'm sorry. Can you speak up or someone turn it... Yeah, now it was hard for me to hear, to be honest. Sorry.
Oh, okay, all right. So just wanted to get into some specifics with respect to the items that we need to make sure that we're all on the same page with. The one item is the location of the Buckeye icon. We love the fact that he is actually delivering a brand identity to the Buckeye Plaza, which has lacked for so many years by having the Buckeye icon. It was actually off to the side, and it was moved more to the center of the actual sign. We also emphasized the need to make sure that there was a landscape base. If you look at that image thing now, one of the things that's important is that the sign appears to be standing in the middle of the parking lot. Obviously, is not, is a code issue, but does not support the aesthetic appeal of the sign. So he has agreed to do the actual landscape base and create the icon. Also, the issue that was brought up was the projection of the letters, which they addressed with respect to making sure that the columns were wide enough where it didn't show the projection of the lettering from the side. And then with respect to the scale, equally, the scale is okay, because the scale is pretty much in line with the sign that is already present there. So it's important. With respect to the LED digital board, that's a plus, because allowing to also market the other tenants without adding additional sign clutter. So that LED board is an ideal thing to have, and it'll provide some excitement to the actual strip itself. So those are some of the things that we are looking at. And I think that if those things could be back, we are in a space, Mr. Chairman, where the department could support the site with these changes. But that's where we're at with it, and we'll leave it up to you guys to deliberate.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak before I let the commission members loose?
We do have Mr. Fluker with his hand raised, though.
Oh, go ahead, August.
Must be very important, because we spent a fair amount of time talking about a sign. I'm going to make a couple... If it's that important, then I think we need to really focus on how we manage future, right? Because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about trying to create and change the narrative. If it's that important, there needs to be some sort of sign typology or some sort of package of what we think this should look like along Buckeye, because we're going to go through this every time someone comes in for a sign, and it's not fair to the applicants. It's not. And the second point I want to make, it's unfortunate here trying to design by committee, because I never advocate for that. And I think that's what makes this very frustrating. I, you know, you know, I don't know what you're asking us to do. I mean, are you asking us to approve the sign, or we're asking you guys to go back to the drawing board? I just heard a lot here.
I think they're asking to approve the sign.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't sure what was being requested. So other than what the sign... Scale's fine. The content, for the most part, is fine. It just, no one likes it, because it doesn't look like those eight or nine vignette sketches that were created, because someone took time to come up with a design. And then it's not vision. Vision, you create a vision board of sign typologies that you find online. So that's what I hear. I'm going to allow my other commission members to chime in if they want, but I think I understand it now.
Okay. Commission members?
You know, I'm going to piggyback off of August a little bit. You know, I think what the applicant's trying to do is rebrand the center. I know the center really well, obviously, because our office was right down the street for many, many, many years. I think it's important, but I also think moving forward is equally as important, because Adam's got a lot of new tenants in there, and we want to keep them, and we want to make sure that they all get patronized. I'm obviously a big proponent for video boards. I think that speaks to the modern intent of how people communicate anymore. And I encourage the video board as part of this signage package. I find the whole sign package, and obviously, we can't see the landscape, and I understand that it's done or pretty close to complete as far as an image goes. But I find it attractive. I find it modern-looking, and I don't find any fault with it. And I think it's an appropriate sign for the area. There's other design professionals on the committee that can speak more to it. What I would love to try to get this a boost moving forward is that we would look at approving this by working with staff and the councilmen to finalize everything. And then that way, we're not wasting any more of Adam's time, and he can go on to filling up the shopping center with tenants.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Sly with his hand raised.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think that that is a wise approach. You know, I just, as I'm reading in front of me the report form from the Design Review District, what it says is that the group felt it lacked coordination with the rest of the site and that it did not speak to the future of the neighborhood. And, you know, to me, that's, as a non-resident of the neighborhood, to me, that's incredibly qualitative. I don't understand what's being... With a comment like that, I don't understand what is being suggested and what is the alternative. And I mention it because in the eight years I've had some affiliation of different degrees with the City of Cleveland, I'll admit, I worry that sometimes Design Review is weaponized and kind of used as a way to stop things that are otherwise permissible that we just don't like. And if... Being clear to whether it's applicable or opposed to all the people and advocate for the input. So in the future, if there are things that, you know, it seems to be appropriate based, you know, coming from Design Review, I really think we need a lot more guidance on what the proposed alternative is. And it's a no, but, and not just a simple no. So I'll leave that there.
All right. Councilman? Oh, go ahead.
So quick, I wanted to get some clarifying points before we move on to the decision. One, while we are here, whenever the committee denies a case, the applicant has a right to go before the planning commission. That's why we are here. With two of the items that have been brought out by the committee, some of them are part of how the applicant is looking to address them. So a lot of the issues have been resolved. The illustration doesn't necessarily depict that. And that is why the chairman has suggested that they can work together to come up with the illustrations that want to show you how the concessions have been made. So the reason why we're here, August, is we want to make sure that they receive the final approval and that the committee or commission understands what the concessions were, because we need to break that impasse of denial. So that's why we're here, because you guys hold a...
Okay. I would, then, if that's the case, thank you, Freddie. This is helpful. I would then move to approve of the applicant's submission with the caveat that he works out the final details with staff and the committee. Thank you.
Second, three.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to keep the councilman in the loop on this, because obviously, he has a lot invested in the area, but it seems like Adam's been doing that, so I appreciate it. Call the question. Call the roll, please.
Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Fluker? Curry? Paul?
Yes.
Sly?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your incredible contribution to this neighborhood.
Thank you. Chair and to the committee, thank you, everybody, and thank you to the committee as well. Thank you.
Councilman Griffin?
Okay, we have Northeast Design Review, Architainer, Infill Housing, New Construction, Seeking Schematic. Who's here for this?
We do have Sharonda Watley with her hand raised, and I'm not sure if we have Adam?
Sharonda?
Yes. Hi, good morning. Why it is before you all, that you are going to see an infill housing proposal from WRJ Developers with Architectural Office. They are introducing new infill housing in the neighborhood near Seventy Second and St. Clair Avenue. They are using container, chicken container materials. And so we wanted to make sure that this was before the full Design Review Committee, as well as the Planning Commission, at multiple stages, so that everyone had a good understanding of what was being proposed. What you should have already received in your package is the motion made from the Design Review Committee. Uh, what you should have should have already received in your package is the motion made from the Design Review Committee. Um, overall, the Design Review Committee was very supportive, um and very much so impressed with the design. Um, there are a few um items made from the motion that they that the um developer has to um work with the architect on in terms of. Some of the landscaping beds, um, some of the access um to um the housing units, um as well as um some site plan features, features. Uh, one of the main things was that then uh look at um different ways to vary the models. Um, architecturally and or with some of the materials um that they are using. So again, I just wanted to introduce the project and let you all know why it's here today. Um, they will also be using a mix of privately owned as well as land bank parcels for to for the um info development. Um, that you all are seeing today. And so today they are seeking schematic approval and I'm here if you have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone speaking to this, um, could you raise your right hand? And then after I swear you and say I do in your name, state your name. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Okay, who's gonna start off? Jermaine, half of your words came through, but the good thing is I could see your lips move, so to get most of it. It's a good thing for video. Okay, go ahead. Adam, I just wanted to uh let Adam know I do have your video, so if you want me to play that at some point, let me know.
Excellent. Let's just play that at the very end. Perfect. Uh, so I'll start off and I'll go kind of quickly as this is a pretty uh lengthy presentation. Uh, this first slide just indicating the uh the lot. And actually, I believe that there was a different presentation pulled up a minute ago that had all eight lots. Um, is that? Okay, we're we're on the right presentation. Great. Um, so these are the eight lots, uh that is Seventy Third that runs right down the center of the eight lots with the yellow indication. Uh, Seventy Second is just to the west, and that's where the architainer project is starting off. Um, that that's already sought and received approval. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Um, this is just indicating all all the land bank lots that are potentially available that we are seeking, that WRJ is seeking. Um, to get access to so we can develop this project further. Uh, the architainer project that we were speaking of earlier, the larger um, uh, the the lar- larger, excuse me, um apartment building is what's highlighted there in white. You can go to the next slide. Uh, and that's just an image of the architect and project developed by Three Squared with WRJ. Next slide. Um, and just going through the zoning for the neighborhood, so we are in a multifamily district, uh highlighted there in brown circle, the the white circle, um surrounded by general industry. Um, as well as local retail, uh the one family is in yellow, uh but primarily surrounded by industry. Next slide. Uh, and just diving in, we'll go through these really quickly uh to show a little bit of the neighborhood. This is at the corner of Seventy Third um and St. Clair uh at the intersection where our project more or less starts. And uh you can see it's a a pretty large industrial warehouse building with a church adjacent to that um on the east side of that corner. You can go to the next slide. Um, and just showing it within the neighborhood, quite a bit of dilapidation that we're um, you know, dealing with. Uh, these houses are not considered uh the lot that we're looking to develop, but um in the future, it looks like, you know, some of these other. Uh, houses that are not completely demolished uh will will be part of the project. Next. And next. And just showing that this is one of our lots. Um, yeah, uh, that's fine. Um, you know, several of the lots that are vacated are being used just for either uh recreational use or uh trash, what, etc. You can go flip through the next couple uh slides. It just kind of indicate, you know, what the the shape of the neighborhood. Uh, overgrowth, whatnot. Um, and then this is our, this is the first lot that's actually our lot that we are looking to develop, the one that has this women pool there with the trampoline. Uh, a couple of those trees will have to be removed unfortunately for for the the project, but they're, you know, not in a location where we would be able to keep them. Next. And then just moving uh north up the lot, uh the next vacant lot, and you can go to the next slide. And one one lot uh further north, um, this will be another one that we'll be developing with the the pole in front of our our lot. Next slide. Uh, and the uh the fourth lot, not the final, uh on this uh on the west side of Seventy Third Street with one tree that we could probably preserve. And I think trim back just a little bit to make a really nice elegant tree in front of this lawn that we're proposing. Next slide. Uh, and this is the the fifth lot uh on the west side of Seventy Third at E Tour, approaching that industrial kind of warehouse area. You can go to the next slide. Same, same more or less location. Next slide. Now, and a few nice houses on, this is uh looking uh further uh towards the southern end of Seventy Third. A few nice houses that are that are on that street. You can go to the next slide. Um, sorry, and looking uh north down the street, I think we just have a couple more. You can go to the next slide. Next slide. Uh, so jumping into the site plans, we have two site plans. We're proposing two uh unique models right now. Uh, one is a triplex and one is a duplex. This is the triplex that we're looking at right now. Um, the site plan that shows the setbacks, uh you are required to have a seven foot side yard setback with a a three unit building. So the setbacks are actually different for each unit. The rear and front yard setbacks are fifteen percent of the lot depth, uh which equates to thirteen feet, six inches. Uh, so we are within the setbacks. We do have a cantilevered balcony that would go over that setback line, which which is an allowable projection. The yard, so we're fine there. Uh, you can see, you know, landscape areas all the way around the house with grass, um in a carport, uh carport. Uh, in the far back uh corner of the lot, uh tight to the property line. This is a studio apartment at the ground level, so we are trying to create a landscape buffer at the front, uh in order to give them a little bit of privacy. Uh, that you, somebody would be living and sleeping in in that area. Otherwise, we have building storage and tenant storage uh behind the unit, which will be in another twenty foot shipping container. And then uh at the far uh back of the lot, a stair, an egress staircase that would take you to all three levels. Um, and uh that would be enclosed and the only non-shipping container construction. Um, in terms of trees, we have on the uh far back, we have an elm tree and far front, we're proposing a uh, and I believe this is actually the old. Slide show for whatever reason, or a few slides got mixed up, but uh the proposed tree there um is a ginkgo tree and we'll go over that um as as we go uh forward. You can go to the next slide. Uh, so this is the site plan for the duplex. We are actually asking for a five foot uh variance for that front uh part of the the building. Uh, the the first floor of this building is setback, so that way it it is within the the required setback. The the second floor that actually projects out, um so just be aware of that. And uh we're we're trying to align with the neighboring porches, uh you know, on either side of the house. So we actually aren't, you know, out of line with the neighborhood. We don't technically have surveys, so we do have to verify this and and get a little bit more precise. Uh, but we have limited flexibility with the the length of the shipping container being a forty foot uh deep shipping container. Um, and then you can see the driveway uh access trying to get in and out of the carport. We just wanna make sure that we have enough room back there. Um, hence the reason for the the variance. Um, we do have a ten foot backing clearance, uh that was pointed out in the previous meeting. Uh, that ten feet is a little atypical. It's usually up to eighteen feet. Uh, we're squeezing it down to about the the minimum that I would be comfortable with. Um, and allowing somebody to comfortably back out more more than likely a compact car. Um, from that far parking spot. Otherwise, the site plan for the duplex is very similar to the triplex. Uh, and I think that's about all I have to say about this. Um, and floor plans, just for reference, we can come back to these, but just trying to keep the floor plans as simple as possible. Uh, again, three forty foot shipping containers that are nine foot, six inches tall uh by eight feet wide, uh taking out the interior partition entirely so that we can have an open plan. Uh, and we went with this design uh with the bedrooms uh running all the way along the side, just so that way you can get a nice cross ventilation from front to back. Um, with windows open, things like that. You go to the next slide. Uh, and then looking at the floor plans for uh the duplex, the triplex and the duplex are almost identical. The duplex does have the shift, um so the units don't stack uh perfectly. Uh, we are looking at doing relatively low income housing here, so uh you know, everything is tight and we're trying to make things as efficient as possible. So the layout is such that the bathrooms in the center do stack and then you just reverse the other bathroom. Um, to allow for that five foot offset in the in the form. You go to the next slide. And there you see just the duplex and the triplex side by side. Uh, within the context of the neighborhood, we felt like the duplex was a little short and the triplex was maybe just a little tall, even though it's shorter than the existing uh housing that's there. So we, with the triplex, we've really tried to break up that facade substantially with a bunch of uh additional uh wood panels and and balconies. Giving the balconies a little bit of a shift from left to right. Get that in greater detail as we go into the uh rendering. You can go to the next slide. So again, looking at the triplex, uh the three stories, uh the two, I'm sorry, three twenty foot shipping containers at the ground level and then three. Uh, forty foot shipping containers at each level above that, uh breaking up the balconies again, like I said, uh from left to right. Um, adding some additional plants to kind of uh soften and buffer the shipping container. It is substantial cost savings to expose the shipping container on the side, uh so we are proposing to do that. Again, softening it with some some uh climbing plant. Uh, steel cables uh run from ground to the bottom of that deck, so that way you can throw the climbing plant uh up the side. And then same thing on the opposite side, um the far side, going from the second floor deck up to the roof. A little cut opening in the roof to allow light through and just kind of um, you know, break up the matting just a little bit more. And then the last thing I haven't talked about was just the uh uh louvered um kind of wood fence, essentially what we're showing in there. That could potentially slide back and forth. We haven't decided yet uh whether that be fixed or or potentially moving, probably fixed. Uh, but that just kind of softens the light. It is easy spacing, so it it blocks in the light and provides a little privacy and it breaks up that. You can go to the next slide. Uh, the straight on view of that same unit, um showing that in winter. One thing that was brought up at the previous meeting was that uh rather than a fence, they proposed us just using a landscape buffer and that's completely fine with us. We just didn't have a chance to update this rendering. Uh, so that fence will not be there. We will just uh probably use a uh evergreen shrub that can be trimmed and trimmed. Keep nice, uh but we'll provide that that privacy that we were talking about. Uh, and then we broke up the facade again in several different ways with the, there is a a vertical wood panel uh that's on the the main face of the facade. Uh, as well as a polycarbonate panel in the main living area to just bring in a little bit more light into that space. You can go to the next slide. Um, that just shows that polycarbonate panels still a little bit better in that view and the pattern that we're trying to create on the facade, which is. Is not quite a checkerboard pattern. It's potentially kind of offset from that, the three. Um, I can't point through the screen very easily, but I think you kind of understand what I'm saying. And that's, that's all I have to really say on that slide. If you can go to the next one. And then just looking at the carport in the rear, we did look at, you know, so these, there's just two units, so we're trying to differentiate a lot and really create a great amount of diversity despite being kind of similar as well. Uh, so the carports, we did completely differently, not shipping container construction, uh concrete walls on the sides that are broken up. Uh, with a uh wood uh structured roof that would be exposed um with a brake metal base. We use a a a nice thick gauge of metal on that brake metal base. And you can go to the next slide. And then just looking at that same carport from uh the adjoining rear lot and, you know, how that rear facade is broken up with the glass. Giving a little bit more blast to the back, because privacy is less of an issue um there. And a- again, the operable windows are down below in this case, whereas on the front side, the operable windows would be up high just along that cross breeze. And natural air ventilation through the house. Next slide. Uh, just the side view of the staircase, taking on the simplest form possible with the stair, uh just for economy, um and using polycarbonate, another very economical material. Um, that would just allow you to have some transparency and a lot of light into that staircase. Um, uh, covered patio in the back for the studio apartment. Uh, and this great door will be your entry to the staircase. Can't really see it in this rendering, but there are sliding doors on that wall that would allow for uh both communal storage as well as uh may maintenance storage for the owners. And you go to the next slide. And we can skip through the elevations aside from, I just want to point out the height of the building, twenty nine feet, five inches roughly, so within a couple inches there. To make sure we can squeeze our insulation package into the roof, uh flat roofs, look uh to the center with um internal grain. And then we're gonna put a rooftop condensing unit that should not be visible from the street located as close potentially to the center of that roof as possible. Um, and a small uh scupper up to the side to, you know, just in case there's an open. You go to the next slide and you can go to the next slide again. One more. And then just jumping to the duplex, um, you can see a very similar design. We just haven't broken up the facade as much because it didn't seem like it needed it. Um, no railing required for that balcony. It is a covered porch, which I think is nice, just adds a little bit of a shift in geometry uh to the neighborhood. And again, trying to align with the front porch as much as possible in that um in the neighborhood. The side window, it's just a window in the kitchen. And you can go to the next slide. Uh, just a nice view of that same, almost uh same shot there, just showing how we would add uh one light to the underside of the the canopy there as a reset bar. Um, the address is shown as a shipping container kind of painted on more or less to resemble how um the font is done on the shipping container. And then the fences, I I didn't point out, uh we are trying to break up um give diversity there with the fence. Uh, here we're doing a thirty degree kind of flip flopping the angle, so that way you get a little bit of a sheen change. Um, just a painted pine fence. Next slide. Uh, not too much else to add here. You can see the uh overflow scupper up to the, on the left side. Um, you can go to the next slide. And then the carport in the rear here, taking a completely different approach, completely open, uh simple steel frame structure uh with steel bracing. Same wood uh structure spanning left to right there with the brake metal uh all the way around. Next slide. Uh, just showing that uh small stair going up to the second floor unit there. We we did debate uh doing an enclosed stair, but we felt like due to the fact that it's such a simple um egress stair, there's only uh, it's only going up one flight. We are completely, we decided we were comfortable with doing this as an open stair. Uh, we are gonna use a steel brace, so an open brace stair that will allow water to drip through. And you can drip, uh go to the next slide. Uh, looking at that stair straight on, it was pointed out the handrail is not correct there, that will, the handrail will extend one foot and go down to the ground, but we will flip, we'll flip the side, so it's on the left side there. Uh, but otherwise, just kind of breaking it up uh from a mapping point of view, allowing the stair to be solid and the balcony railing to be uh totally open. Uh, you can see a couple of lights on there. Uh, here's the vertical wood siding that I'll show you in a little bit greater detail at the end. Um, you know, a back porch um uh for both units. Next slide. And just showing the night view, we are trying to keep the light very minimal, um but at the same time, very safe, so we do have a couple sidewalk lights. Uh, we've got the uh wall scum, uh that is the the actual size that we selected, so keeping that light down so the neighbors aren't getting blinded. Next slide. Last view, I think here, of the driveway. It is a tight driveway condition, so we have that fence there. We're trying to use landscaping bumper to almost protect the building and keep people from running into that. We go to the next slide. Next slide. Just showing the two in context, you've got the triplex and the duplex shown there. Although here, this is where they're quite far from each other. You can go to the next slide. Next. Next. There you go. You got the two in context again with the art container project back behind that's shown in red. Just to kind of show contextually where that sits approximately to our projects. And you can go to the next slide. And there's the eight lots in context. We are looking at the idea of altering the facade just a little bit more as well as add some color variation throughout the neighborhood. We'll come back for final review on that. So right now, we're just seeking schematic on all of these. And then far corner lot, which I really didn't show, we're looking at showing the two-story unit. So in terms of the configuration of the unit, that's really what we're looking at right now. We've got the two-story unit on the far northwest corner. And moving up, you got a two-story, then a three-story, two-story and three-story. And then when you go look at the units from front to back, I guess west to east, you've got a two-story across from a three-story. The next one over is a two-story and then the far one is a three-story. Just with the thinking that doing a two-story unit on the far northwest corner would make the most sense. Kind of soften that edge as you need to the neighborhood since that one is exposed on all sides. Rather than go to the smaller unit, I think you can make an argument in that way, but that's where we're leaning. You can go to the next slide. And next slide. Showing a little bit of variation of color that we're looking at doing. Like to get your feedback on that, please. Come back for final approval on that. And next slide. And just the street view. We do have other minor alterations that we're looking to make. Where on this corner unit, for example, with the cantilever endy in the back, with the unit actually dropped down to the ground, you have an 80 accessible accessibility as an option. We're not showing landscaping in this yet, so yes, keep that in mind that these would be buffered more with landscaping. And I don't know if there are any more slides or not. You can go to the next one. Oh yeah, that's right. Okay, so we've got our material palette here. Pretty simple uniform across the, fairly uniform across the site. You've got the dark shipping container color, the seater and the polycarbonate, steel grate stair, a little bit of concrete for that parking structure. And then the dark painted wood for the fence that would definitely be a pine. Standing seam is the back of those one staircase where you do have a larger swath of metal. We can go to the next slide. Just the lighting spec, integrated lighting, so the subsurface into that patio when we cover that soffit, when you can. And then when it has to be surface monolith, we can light a couple of those on the triplex. And you can go to the next slide. And then the wall scum. And we'll have some additional security lighting that we're not showing right now that would periodically show up. We selected this just as a really economical street light that can be directed so that with light not shining at the neighbors, but provides a little security as you walk around the house. And then the concrete subsurface light below stainless steel, very inexpensive light that would add a little bit of security as you're walking up towards that staircase on the duplex. And you can go to the next slide. Going through the landscaping here, birch tree in the back and ginkgo tree in the front. Ginkgo tree would be great in the front with the really beautiful gold leaves in the fall. You can go to the next slide. And then you're showing the couple of grasses that we're looking at using. So not quite what we're showing in the rendering, so we'll go through this a little bit more detail. There were a couple of comments about the landscaping in the last meeting by Peggy, who's a landscape architect. I think she made a valid point, good suggestion. We were showing a three-inch grip where you could grow color grasses and she made a point that that might not actually work. So we'll look at either expanding that, the windows as a different plant there. Make sure the plant is used to that. Next slide. And that's it, just ending on showing the, you know, all the units on the site. And if you do have that video and you can play it, that would be great.
Okay, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out that we have Fred Collier, Director Collier and Shannon Leonard with their hands raised and I will queue up the video.
Okay, go ahead, Director.
Yeah, just a couple of points. I do want to say that in working with the applicants and looking at this particular area, one of the things that we're trying to do in our neighborhoods as we reinvest, in particular, some of these east side neighborhoods, is really start to introduce a diversity of housing product and options. That's critical.
I think we lost you, Freddie. Fred?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, I went out for a minute. So I was stating that one of the things that we are looking to do, particularly as reinvestment happens in neighborhoods on the east side, is really introduce a new type of a product and create housing choice and housing options. And we began having dialogue with this particular development interest. We started really to see that contextually within this neighborhood, you have a lot of industrial commercial activity. Your stone's throw away from the lake and Rockefeller Park. And the first investment of theirs that we've approved sits on 72nd Street, which is largest commercial. And the interior of the neighborhood, that's the building in red you see to your left. Now, the interior neighborhood has a lot of gaps. And the question became, how do you start to fill in those gaps? So with this introduction of new product type, the goal is really to create some new energy and new excitement. One of the areas that we've looked at and compared it to, you know, when you think about Duck Island, for example, and what's going on over there. They've done a really good job of blending very modern contemporary architectural styles into existing neighborhood contexts. But what makes it work is that there's enough of those being done where you start to get this blending. And this is why you see on this image here, these are scattered site throughout a very small footprint. So you'll get that sense of intimacy and sense of scale, but it is a departure from what you would traditionally see. And to us, that's an advantage. And we believe that in this area and in this context, this new type of product will be a draw for individuals looking to live in this particular neighborhood. Now, these are multiple units, obviously. One of the reasons why we wanted to bring it before the planning commission is because we wanted to get that direction, looking at it from that neighborhood scale. But we feel very, you know, strongly that this is a project that's moving in the right direction, given what we're looking to do in that overall geography. And many of you know that St. Clair Superior neighborhood north of St. Clair, it's very commercial and very industrial feeling. But this little community is nestled at the corner of 72nd in St. Clair. And we think it's a really good opportunity to really strengthen that node and really create some context. Maurice, I don't know if you can go to that aerial slide that has the land bank lots on it so that there could be some understanding of sort of that neighborhood context and how small and walkable this area is, maybe four or five streets.
I think that was one of the first slides.
Correct.
How long is the construction duration on base?
The actual construction duration, I don't know. I think it would be roughly five months.
Five months.
For a unit, it's roughly, yeah, looking to start construction in the spring.
And we know August, we know how important context is to you. So they lit it up with pictures of the neighborhood. So yeah, go, yeah. So if you look around in this graphic, you can see what you have going on here. So St. Clair Avenue, this area of St. Clair is relatively dormant. 72nd Street leads you right to the waterfront, leads you right to the first energy site. Gordon Park is up there. And we have an overall master plan that we've been working on for this particular geography, building off of the 2004 Waterfront District Plan, which really seeks to connect the neighborhood south to the water. And this corner piece here, as you can see, Dieter Avenue, 76th Street, 77th, and then St. Clair at the bottom. This is a very small, tight neighborhood surrounded by a lot of commercial activity, which we're going to try to leverage from a development perspective. Some of these larger-scale lots, there's one particularly large-scale lot just south of Gordon Park that we want to build on. So we see this as a potential strategic play by inviting this new type of product. And when we think about this whole near construction, what better area to do it in than one that has that sort of transition from commercial to some residential fabric where you have gaps to be filled? So we thought it would be an ideal scenario to really try to build out all of these lots. So that's been our dialogue with this group. I will say too that, and I'm going to say this because it's important, this is a, one of a few minority development organizations that we've dealt with in my 20 years as a member of city planning. So, you know, we're looking to, you know, seek, you know, true opportunity to create, you know, access to, help to rebuild and reinvest in our neighborhoods by all people. So I just want to go on record saying that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director. Who's next?
We had Shannon Leonard and then we have Charlie Townsend after that.
Okay. Shannon?
Yes, Shannon Leonard, City Planning in our zoning section. I just wanted to point out on the properties, because they're infill housing, that the developer stated that he needed a five-foot front yard setback and he was seeking a variance. I just want you all to know that the border zoning appeals will not be able to grant a front yard setback. So I'm really happy that this isn't the final approval, but that isn't something you probably will want to look into for the next round of approvals. That that five-foot front yard setback will not, they don't have the authority to grant that.
So that's a map setback?
It's just a residential front yard setback.
Is that still?
Only under very strict conditions are they allowed to grant variances. And without having more information on the setbacks of the surrounding properties, you know, it's hard to say definitively that they wouldn't be able to. But I agree with Ms. Leonard, just looking at the presentation, it's probably not something that's grantable by the board. So it's, I just wanted to raise that so you guys.
Can we look into?
We can address that before we get to that point.
Right. Yeah, let's, let's look into that right away.
Thank you.
And then we have Charlie Townsend.
Charlie?
Hi, guys. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. This is Charlie from Famico's Foundation. I did want to hop on, I'm not sure if our real estate director, who you know Chris, is on or if Councilman Harrison is on, I believe he is. I do want to say that both Famico's and Councilman Harrison's office are very, very much in support of the project. Particularly, we are not only impressed by the presentation of what WRJ, but I do appreciate the words of Director Collier. One of the things that we want to point out is that these particular shipping containers that will be as residential living facilities will be the first of its kind, not only in the city of Cleveland, but I believe these particular type will be the first in the state of Ohio. So it is really, really exciting for us as we look into revitalizing this neighborhood to have these come to St. Clair Superior. I do echo what Director Collier said about these particular living facilities, sort of reflecting the more industrial-type atmosphere of St. Clair Superior. One of the last things I wanted to point out is because these are both public and private lots, is that this area on 72nd is probably the most residential part of St. Clair Superior. So it is really important and we are delighted that they are going, that they are being built in this area because we want to take advantage of where the residents are in St. Clair Superior because it is so industrial and we know that the amenities are closest to this area and there is access to the lake as well as access to Gordon Park. Lastly, I do want to point out that, understanding the city has a master plan that they are following through. Famico's and Councilman Harrison are also commissioning a master plan for St. Clair Superior and that is currently ongoing, actually. And then before that becomes finalized, we've also looked at some things that we can implement before that plan becomes finalized. I say all this because WRJ and Art Container, what they're doing is we see very much as fitting into the fabric of that master plan. I think that these are some beautiful facilities and we do urge your support and approval, understanding that we will have to work with the BZA about how we're going to get some variances for that, for the lots. I just wanted to say that and echo the words of others and I will shut up and we look forward to any sort of feedback you guys have for them.
Councilman, did you want to speak?
You are muted if you wanted to speak. He may have stepped away.
Okay. Members? Questions? Members?
We have no hands raised.
This is Lilia. I just want to make a motion and I really want to commend this team and the project, both in design and thoughtfulness and exciting for, at all levels. So, and I'd also like to say that if it means anything for zoning to hear that we're in support of any sort of setback variances that might be required, I'd be happy to add that to my motion, which is that maybe we can't grant it, but we're very much in support of the variances that are required as they go on through the process. I would like to include that at least note in my motion to approve this.
We have a motion?
Second. This is a really exciting project.
We have a motion second, further discussion.
Yeah, I would like to chime my two commissioners, my colleagues. Very thoughtful in terms of how you guys worked this out. Obviously, you know, cars don't need four walls and a garage door. So I think this is very, very wise and it's very, very fresh for the area. Thank you.
Thanks, August. I just want to add my two cents. I find it fabulous on all levels. I think the idea is fabulous idea. I think the architecture is very well done. I think the area you've decided to place these is wonderful. So great job to the developer and the architect. Call for all, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca. Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Good luck. We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 10600 Chester Avenue, mixed-use building, new construction. Seeking final approval, this receives schematic design approval on September 4th. Who's here to speak to this?
I am Sean O'Gorman with Fitzgerald Associates.
Sean, who else is with you?
I have members of the Midwest Development Partner, developer Steve Rubin, as well as David Cron with Bielowsky. All will be members of the master plan.
Okay, so everyone that's going to speak to this matter, I'll swear you in. And if you would say adieu afterwards in your name, that would be great. Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you still answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do, David Cron.
Anyone else?
I will.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
I will start by thanking the commission for having us back for our final design presentation for the mixed-use residential apartment building at 10600 Chester Avenue. We're requesting final approval, but approval only of the residential portion. We're pulling the streetscape and storefront out of this review. We'll come back for that with a separate approval in conjunction with the overall master plan. So as we move through the slides, I can delineate what's included and what's included. This slide you see here is the entire master plan, all three blocks, the same image we showed when we were here for schematic approval in September. And this makes the point that the 10600 building is one portion of a larger district, because this is an infill district, we're infilling each bid, each building in a way that allows the existing neighborhood services to maintain continuous operation during construction. The next slide, the next image, we see the result of doing it this way. We're able to achieve a more dense and vibrant city center, whose functions of each building support one another. This is made possible by the urban core overlay district zoning, which we comply with, and was approved at a schematic level by this commission in September. Next slide is zooming into the north block. This is a good place to delineate where we're, what we're seeking approval of. 10600 and Chester and Stokes, shown here in the brown and the peach terms, will start construction first. We want to begin permitting now, because it will take two years to build. And again, like I said, pulling out the streetscape, the landscape, exterior signage, exterior lighting, retail storefront, those presented later, along with other elements of the, of the entire master plan. Moving on to the next slide, these are the floor plans, the massing diagrams that you've seen before. Again, yellow, retail excluded, but all the other elements here are what we're focusing on. The garage, shown in gray, will have internal ramping, providing self-contained circulation levels three through six. Residential apartments, shown in blue, level seven on up, and also the blue portion extending down to the ground. That's the residential entry, carrying that same language down to the ground. This is included in what we're talking about. We have a blow-up image of that on the next page. The ground floor, residential entry, floor-to-ceiling glass, clear glass, making a strong visual connection indoor activities to outdoor, activating the streetscape. Service areas on either side of this activity center will have opaque materials, but still with the highest level of finish. One example, the loading dock door, you see that left of the leasing office, spandrel glass, metal mullions in the same plane, maintaining one consistent expression. We have a, an image of that on the next page, a photo at the, the bottom right, folding hanger door, seamless and integral to the window wall, crisp clean front-of-house finishes at the service areas along, along the active streetscape. The next slide, moving up the building, just above your periphery from the street is the residential garage facade. We went into a lot of detail on this in schematic presentation, so I don't need to repeat everything, but I want to call them objectives of permeability and texture. These create a dynamic surface that change based on your vantage point. So light shimmers and reflects differently off of the multifaceted facade as you move down Chester Avenue. The backup effect of the more transparent panels as the sun sets, creating the inverse pattern across the facade. Kid of parts on the next page, the materials, the same, same pieces we showed you last time, again, texture, corrugated metal panels, permeability through these panels with the perforations. The next slide, we get a sense of looking up at the garage from the street level. Cars are shielded from view by the horizontal structure, the horizontal concrete structure. From the outside, you read the pattern on the surface. From the inside, you get the permeability and a connection to the outside. Moving around the corner on the next slide, an image from Stokes Boulevard. This is, this image is illustrating the future commercial and shopping district. Remember, the buildings in the foreground and streetscape, these are aspirational predictions of master plan components that will come later. But we're showing this now to help describe the role that the residential garage will play in framing the pedestrian experience. Again, infilling the architecture up to the property lines, creating an urban street wall. Next slide is moving up the tower, focusing our attention on the metal window wall facade of the apartments, in fact, the largest quantity of area. As we discussed previously, we're separating the massing into two distinct volumes and differentiating the volumes by the treatment of materials. On the right, all glass but glazed window wall assemblies with glass slab edge covers. On the left, the shorter volume juxtaposing the taller element with a richer texture of metal mullions, metal slab edge covers, glass guardrails at projecting concrete balconies. The next slide is material, in photos of the materials. The glass images at the top, the side-by-side image of the two different glass selections, illustrating the glass appears under different sky conditions. So the taller element on the right, the more reflective glass responding more dynamically to the envi, to the environment. And the next image is a picture of that. Patterns and textures woven together to form a cohesive language oriented to and responding with the surroundings and one part of the urban district. We've got additional elevations to illustrate the same points I've made already, so I'll pause here and ask for questions on the architecture and materials.
Commission members?
We have no hands raised at this point.
David, get anything to add?
No, I think Sean did a great job covering it.
He did. He did. Beautiful building.
Yeah, it's, it's really excellent. And so if I hear correctly, we're really final, final approval on this building. You'll come back with others along the way and the streetscape, et cetera. But I, I think since we saw this last, also the refinement and the detailing and just extraordinary, going to be extraordinary addition, so thank you very much.
And I have to chime in because I love you guys, because you treated the garage with dignity.
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
And, and that, that is the bait of my existence where I live, across from the clinic. That's all I have to say. Hopefully this is. Thank you.
Thanks, August.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve, and that landscaping signage and the treatment for the retail will come back at a later date, but this gets them a building permit and shovels from the ground.
I move for approval. I'd like to, if August is okay with it, add accommodation for the, for.
Sure.
Yep.
And what would you have done if August would have said no?
Well, he, I like, I meant, just because I agree with his point, and it's exceptional, and it's important, this location, and I think the care and the detailing of this project is, I think, what we want to see in terms of new kind of, especially new construction architecture.
Agreed, agreed. So we have a motion?
All second.
I have a motion in two seconds. So this is for final approval with accommodations.
Yes.
Further discussion? Herring, nun, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca. Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Shannon, David, great job. Good luck, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Bye now.
Bye. Okay, is there going to be a director's report today?
No, there won't. Lillian, I need to circle back with you, Lillian, with respect to the 21st Century City Symposium, something we need from you, so I'll give you, okay?
Is it money?
No, 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 you, no, you guys are already, you know, we.
Hey, Lillian? And since you've got asked for your money, can I? I'd like a little cash, if you're handing it out.
No, we, we already got your money, Lillian.
I know. All right, call me anytime.
All right, I'll call you.
All right, I'm going to have a grand weekend.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.
Excuse me, Fred? Freddie, still there? When are you going to, when are you going to city hall?
Probably in the next hour.
Okay.
I'll be there within the next hour. All right, brother.
All right, take care. Thank you.
All right, talk to you guys soon. Oh, David, way to be efficient, man. I thought we would be here to at least one o'clock, so.
Hey, Fred, are you still there?
Oh, you lost him. Darn.